Age we'll talk about as well is a comparison of the budget, the final budget to the tentative budget. And so for starters, kind of looking at that first page, looking across all of our funds, we're actually looking at expenditures that will exceed revenues by about 4.8 million. Obviously, the reason for that is our renovations project at the junior high. There's about, I think it's about $5.8 million worth of expenditures related to that project in this budget. And so when you kind of carve that out and just look at the operating funds only, which you can't necessarily see on this document, but if you actually looked at the, the operating funds, which consists of the education fund, the operations and maintenance fund, our transportation fund, and then our working cash fund, we would actually have a surplus of about $600,000. So for lack of a better term, I will call that a balanced budget, which is good, but we do have a little bit of a surplus there. Touching on a few of the items here on page one, just a, a little bit of an explanation. On the local sources side, our major revenue source there is our property taxes. And so the levy that was approved in December of 2023 went up just over 5%. And so that's why the increase from one year to the next is 5% there on that first line for local sources. In terms of federal sources, you can see that that dropped about 6% compared to last year's budget. And we've, our Esser funds that were a response to the pandemic and some of those federal bailout funds, those are slowly starting to trickle off. And so we'll just see a little bit of that. I think it was around 200,000 here in this current fiscal year 25 budget. And so that explains the drop from the prior year to the current year's budget. On the expense side, the agreement that you're approving tonight has a average increase of about 5.5% for this upcoming fiscal year. There's a little bit of a cushion there in the salaries. We typically end up having about 1% left at the end of every year. And so we just include that in the budget, just in case something happens throughout the course of the year to make sure we don't go over budget in that area. Health insurance, we did see our, for our benefits there, employee benefits, that second line item on the expenses, we have seen increase of around 8% for our HMO and PPOs. So that's factored into the budget. In terms of our purchase services, that 16% increase from the last year, a lot of what's driving that is kind of our expected cost for food services. We obviously went through the bid process, we went through the RFP process, and did select a new provider, which does come with some additional costs. They were the lowest cost provider through the RFP, but it was more than what we were paying air mark. And so that increase in costs, along with what we're hoping will be an increase in participation. You've probably heard a lot of good feedback from Chartwells and the, the food that's being provided, and the kids are excited about it. So we're anticipating seeing kind of an increase in participation, which will increase our costs because we pay per meal, but we'll obviously see some reimbursement from the federal government on the revenue side as well. And then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, the capital outlay costs, that 411%, that's because of the work that we've completed in the summer of 2025, or summer of 2024, sorry. A lot of that, a lot of those costs will end up happening in the fiscal year 25 budget. Looking at the final budget versus the tentative budget that was presented back in June, that's on the next page, the next summary page within the finance packet. Total revenues, didn't see a, a big change there, only about $88,000 from the tentative budget. Some things that did change line by line, we finally got our estimate from the Illinois Department of Revenue regarding our corporate personal property replacement taxes. That's that number that we're never quite sure where they come up with their estimates, and, and we can never say exactly what we think those amounts are going to be. But the Illinois Department of Revenue did come out with those estimates, and they did drop another 20 to 30% from last year. And so I reflected that in the final budget here, where we saw a drop of about $300,000. We did revise the estimate for our state sources and our federal sources. Obviously, as we get closer to final approval for those grant dollars, we go back through those revenues and try and predict what the final grant amounts will be and what, if any, carryovers there are. And so we did increase those amounts a little bit to offset some of that drop in our CPPRT revenues. On the expenditure side, I think for the tentative budget, I estimated increases about 5% for our salaries. And so with this agreement that's being approved tonight, it actually ended up being about 5.5%. That was the average increases for our teaching staff. And so that's been reflected in the final budget numbers. I did, kind of based on our unaudited results, we did see some additional costs in our transportation fund again. And so on the conservative side, I budgeted a little bit of a cushion in our transportation fund. We never know if we're going to get new students in transition that need to be transported, if there's going to be any additional transportation requirements for special ed. And so sometimes it's hard to predict exactly where that fund's going to end up at the end of the year. And so to be conservative, I did increase our transportation costs, primarily in the areas of special ed and homeless, just to make sure that we had enough money in that transportation fund in case some of those things might transpire over the course of the year. One question, that kind of covers the, the kind of the highlights for, for what changed from the tentative budget. I did get a question from a board member about, you know, looking at kind of the across all funds, I think it's $4.8 million is kind of the excess of expenditures over revenues. That's what's on this budget that's being approved tonight. But if you look back at our last projection in April, we were only anticipating that excess of expenditures to be about 4.2 million. So there was a variance there of about $600,000. And the board member was wondering, kind of, you know, why did that change? What, what caused that to increase and become a larger dollar amount? And so there's a variety of items that kind of go into it. At a high level, the revenues on the budget actually ended up increasing about a million versus our projection. The primary is there is just finalizing what the tax levy budget was. That ended up being about 300,000 of that difference. And then the other area was the Esser funding. I didn't know exactly when the timing of those Esser funds, I didn't know if we'd be getting any of that in this current fiscal year. And so we did end up receiving kind of that last bit of Esser funds in this FY25 budget, and that wasn't factored into the projection, that was actually backed out of the projection. So that was what kind of changed on the revenue side. From an expenditures, obviously, we finalized our collective bargaining agreement. It was a little bit higher than that 5% we were initially anticipating. So that added some costs to our expenditures. And then we had the additional transportation costs, which I just mentioned. And then lastly, tuition. Every year, Jen does a great job of looking at what students we have in the district, how many students, what programs they're in, and what we think those dollar amounts are going to be. And so ultimately, those tuition costs ended up being higher than what we had on the projection. Does that, kind of?
Yes, thank you. That was very thorough.
So that's kind of the overall, where we, where we're landing with our overall budget. Part, one other thing that we do as part of the budget approval process is we look at our estimated fund balance based on this new budget, what those fund balances will be at the end of this year that we're going into. So basically, June 30th of 2025. It's, it's one of those things that we're doing because of our fund balance policy for colon 20, where we're trying to make sure that the, the district is staying within that 90 to 180 days of expenditures and fund balances. And obviously, if, if we're going one way or the other, that's when it triggers a conversation with the board. So we can have those discussions in terms of how do we get back up to the 90 days, or if we're trending over 180 days, you know, what kind of options do we have in terms of saving for capital projects, looking at tax relief, those kinds of things. So that was kind of the history of this fund balance policy and looking at this fund balance policy whenever we do the budget. I did receive a couple of questions. It's, the, the fund balance policy review is in your board packet. I think it's a separate, or it's in the finance packet. I think it's a separate item, if you want to pull that up and look at it. It's important to stress that, that the fund balance policy, while we look at individual funds on this report, the fund balance itself, the policy, is looking at the overall expenditures and fund balance across all of our operating funds. Again, our operating funds are our ed fund, operations and maintenance fund, the transportation fund, and the working cash fund. So from year to year, you might see one go a little bit higher, or one a little bit lower. But what we're pretty much tracking is that across all of those funds, in aggregate, we're staying within that 90 to 180 days. And so when you look at the, the review here, what's estimated at the end of June of 2025, you'll see the education fund is right between that 90 and 180 days. We are seeing the O and M fund get a little bit higher. It's at that 257-day mark. What's interesting about that is actually, if you look back just a few years ago to June of 2021, that was actually our lowest fund. It was at about 70 days. So it had actually dipped a little bit before, below that 90-day requirement. But again, it's, we're looking at in aggregate because from one year to the next, some of these funds are going to move a little bit. And then transportation, we're seeing that start to go down a little bit because of some of these additional costs. As we've come out of COVID, transportation has gotten more expensive. We've had an increase in the number of students in transition, which has increased our costs there, as well as some of the students requiring special ed services. So in terms of monitoring it, what we do going forward, in this case, if you go back to 2021, because we were going a little bit lower in the operations and maintenance fund, it actually increased our levy. And so that's part of the reason why we're seeing that now go up a little bit more and become a higher, higher days of expenditures and fund balance. And so on this budget, I actually kept our O and M levy flat. I didn't increase it at all. And I moved a little bit of that over to our transportation fund to try and help offset some of those decreases. And so that's, that's what we do. Anytime we go through the levy process, we evaluate where we are in terms of fund balances, we look at the Miller ratio, and then we adjust our levy accordingly, and we might move it between funds. So moving forward, we'll probably either keep our O and M levy flat, or possibly reduce it a little bit, so that we get back towards that kind of 90, 100 to 180-day window within the individual fund. Another option, something we can, can consider is, obviously, we know we have capital improvement needs. We do those big projects out of the capital projects fund. And so we might consider making a transfer from the O and M fund in the future as opposed to the ed fund to help pay for some of those capital project costs down the road. And so hopefully that, I, I got some of those questions about this fund balance review. Hopefully, that helps address those questions. I think that was all the questions I received. Again, the, the final budget document is in the board packet for approval, along with the resolution. And we'll have a public hearing during the meeting this evening, in case there are any comments from the public in terms of the budget documents slated for approval this evening. I've done a lot of talking there, kind of ran through some of these items relatively quickly. Hopefully, I addressed the questions that we received over the weekend. Are there any other items that the committee has any questions on?
Dave, I just had a question, something you were just sharing. So you said part of that capital outlay is the remainder of the summer of 2024 work, but is a portion the summer of 2025 work? And what's the breakdown?
So in terms of the overall capital outlay, I think it was about 5.8 million is what I budgeted in the capital projects fund. 500,000 of the 800,000 estimated for the summer of 2025 is included in this year's budget.
Okay, so of the, it's, you're close, 5.9. So 500,000 is for 2025, and the rest is to pay off what was already done in '24?
Correct.
Okay.
So we really did not, obviously, the, the work starts, when school is out. And so school's out at the end of May. And so the, the contractors don't really even get working until the end of May, early June. And so while there is some work completed during that first month, the majority of the expenditures don't occur until July and August, and even September and October. We still haven't closed out the project. We're still finalizing those costs. But most of the costs from the summer of 2024 will end up being in fiscal year 25.
You don't happen to know off the top of your head what we spent in fiscal year '24 on that?
Um.
Sorry, I didn't think of it.
I do not, no, sorry.
You can send it to me later.
I think it's, it's around a million dollars. That's, that's off the top of my head. And I think the overall first summer's worth of work is looking to be about 6 to 6.3 million dollars. So hopefully, if I did my math correctly, that works, a million in FY24, 5 million in FY25. I think I'm pretty close there.
Are there any further questions or discussion? No? Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilkinson. All right. So item five is the Lyle Junior High renovations, phase two. Obviously, very topical, the last item. That information we found under item five of the finance committee packet. Mr. Wilkinson, if you would once again take the floor.
So tonight, as we begin to wrap up the work that we've completed this summer, I think we've made a lot of good progress at the junior high. Some of the items that we actually had slated for the second summer's work in the summer of '25, we actually ended up being able to accelerate a few of those items into the summer that we just completed. Part of the rationale for that was we had a construction manager this summer that was helping to facilitate the project. And so being able to utilize their services for more areas of the work was something that was beneficial and also allowed us to, to kind of glean some economies of scale from doing more of the work sooner and having their involvement in that process. And so as noted in the write-up, renovating the special ed classrooms, that was something that, when we last presented to you in July of '23, we were looking at doing this upcoming summer. We actually got that work completed this summer, which is great. We also were able to do all the ceiling and lighting in the classrooms, and then also upgrade the unit ventilators in the classrooms, which was also necessary as we were starting to have trouble securing parts and repairing some of those unit ventilators. So we were excited that we were able to get that work done in advance. And so some of those items have now already been completed as part of the, the overall 6 to 6.3 million dollars worth of work that we did in the summer of 2024. And so as a result of that, as we look at next summer, we actually ended up having a much smaller scope in terms of what we're asking the committee tonight to authorize us to have the architects start working on bid documents and start to put together the bid packages to proceed with this next phase of work. As noted in the, in the packet, for this summer, we're looking at doing some HVAC improvements, in particular, two areas. The commons unit, the unit that, that powers the commons, we've, we've, it actually is a unit that has two compressors. We're currently, one compressor isn't working. We, we've tried to fix it, and it, it just, it, it didn't work. And so that's one that has become critical, and we need to replace that this summer, kind of regardless, to make sure that that's working. And as part of that, we also wanted to replace the auditorium unit and kind of split that into two to make it more efficient, where one will power the stage area, and one will power the, the area where the seats are. And so then, when they're just using the stage, we can only do the HVAC on that portion of the, of the, of the room, as opposed to having to heat and cool the entire room. So that's the HVAC work we're looking to do. All of that was slated for this overall renovation project. Also, we have some health, life, safety items in the auditorium, not significant items. We, we won't need a construction manager. We probably won't even need a general contractor. We'll be able to work with a vendor to get that done. That's some aisle lighting and, and a staircase for accessibility purposes. And then lastly, looking at some safety and security upgrades in terms of getting cameras throughout the interior of the building, as well as adding intrusion detection. And so current estimates for all of that work is approximately $800,000. We'd like to give Perkins and Will the go-ahead to put together those bid documents. We'll end up using a general contractor. There's not enough work there to enlist the work of a construction manager. So we'll use a general contractor for this, which will be part of the bid process. And then in terms of the cameras, we might just go directly to a vendor and get those cameras specked out and, and installed over the course of the summer. Some of this work, Perkins and Will has already worked on. When they were looking at kind of design development and programming and kind of the planning for the junior high project, a lot of these items, I would say all of these items were already included in there. It's just a matter of putting together the documents so that we can bid that out and award it to a contractor. The other piece is, within the documents that I provided, there's, there's kind of a revised renovation schedule that you can see. You can see that, that for the summer we just completed, we've, we've updated the cost kind of where we think it's going to land. Obviously, we're still finalizing everything with the contractor and the construction managers, but we're anticipating that work to be about 6.3 million. And as I mentioned earlier, again, some of those items, the four special ed classrooms, the classroom lighting, and the HVAC upgrades, that was all moved forward into this current summer. We have the summer of 2025 work, and then we are looking at taking a pause in the summer of 2026. Why are we looking at taking a pause? I know back in July, when we last talked to you, we were talking about doing it over four summers. Now, we're looking at potentially doing it over three, but having a pause in between that second and third phase of the project. And the primary reason is that in order to enlist the services of a construction manager, you kind of need to have a, a certain amount of work, because you've got to have their staff on site, you've got to have a superintendent assigned to the job, a project manager. And so the cost of doing that work becomes less if you can consolidate more projects into one. And so the other advantage, obviously, is, is looking at when we would issue bonds in order to fund this work. If you recall, back in, in July of '23, we were looking at using $7 million of fund balances and $13 million of bonds for the project. We spent most of that $7 million already through this first summer of work. And so by deferring this work until that last summer, summer of '27, we can issue the bonds, we can evaluate where interest rates are, and make a determination on when to issue those bonds and do the work. Another advantage of waiting until the last summer for the work is that we can bid out the work, open up the bids, see what everything is going to cost, and then we can evaluate, are there anything that, that maybe we can't do because of the budget? Can we do it all? It, it allows us to look at all of that at the same time to make sure that we stay within this $20 million budget. You can see on the document that I've provided, it's estimated at just slightly over $20 million. But again, by deferring this work until the last summer, we can make sure that, that it stays within that 20 million. Why is it a little bit over 20 million now? One factor is deferring that work into the last summer, which maybe this is the one con, is you do have one more year of escalation. So by waiting a year to do that work, costs will go up. We estimate that at about 5% a year. It may or may not be that when we actually get to the point, but that's what our architects and construction managers use for kind of that additional year of waiting. On the positive, if we can defer issuing those bonds a little bit longer, depending on where rates are at, we'll have, you know, six to nine months less of interest that has to be paid on those bonds. So some of that escalation will be offset by those lower borrowing costs. Again, we don't know where rates are going to be at. We're able to call them in September of '26. That's the earliest we can issue. But, you know, the Fed just cut interest rates, so that obviously lowered the cost of borrowing for the school district. That's probably going to continue to happen, at least if you listen to the, the media reports and what the Fed is saying. But we don't know. And so this gives us time to evaluate that. We don't have to make any decisions on that last piece of the project. But that is a, a little bit of an explanation as to why the schedule has changed. So again, tonight, we're just looking at getting authorization to proceed with this summer of 2025 work. I would call it similar to a, a regular summer project. Usually, we spend about $700,000 or $800,000 on a typical summer project. And some of these items, I mean, they're all, they're all things we're going to have to do. They're HVAC-related. And so we'd like to move forward with that. Is there any questions, or did you want to add anything, Keith?
I have a couple of questions, Dave. As, listening, as you're talking, you mentioned the bonds, just, and you can send this to me later if you don't have it in front of you. What do we owe right now in bonds total?
I do not have that question. I can-
Sorry. Just as you were talking about them, it came to me. I'll, I'll email it to you. You can let me know later. And then for, into this renovation schedule, the HVAC work and the boiler work, do we have estimated ROI on that?
Oh, we do not.
Okay. But we would anticipate, do they have, like, does the vendor for the products we're getting with the HVAC have, they should have that in there?
In terms of the energy efficiency ratings and things like that, is that what you're-
Yeah, like usually, like, they, like, if, if it's able to split, like, you were talking about the zone coverage, and how much you, you'd reduce your spending on, like, the electric bill, on being able to do one zone versus the other zones. So just wondering if we took a look at ROI on that, what we could anticipate in the future on some of those monthly bills that we have.
Yeah, we can certainly ask the engineers if they can put together that information. I know on the unit in the commons, I mean, as I mentioned, like, that's hit end of life. We have, our maintenance department has had a good, done a great job of keeping that unit running, but we have gotten to the point where they can't get one of those compressors to, to operate without replacing it entirely. And so at that point, we felt like we should just replace the whole thing. But we can, we can ask the engineers if they can come up with a ROI. I don't know if they can do that, or if we'd have to hire a, an additional consultant. I'll have to find out.
A lot, a lot of times, I think the manufacturers will send you one, you know, because they want you to, to look at their items. So they should have something with some at least guidelines in it.
Okay, we can ask you out.
And then just a little bit more, just, and I don't know if we have the detail on it, the lighting in the auditorium, I think that's a great idea for the life safety that you mentioned. Is that one of those types of lightings you can do that doesn't require a power source? So if there's a power outage and there was children in that auditorium, they'd be able to exit safely? I know there's different options. I don't know details behind.
So it's, it's, I don't know about operate without a power source, but it is, you, you, it's called aisle lighting, and it's for exiting in an emergency. So it's designed to stay on if the power would go out.
Perfect.
So the, yeah, that's the-
Yeah.
That's the life safety purpose of it, yes.
Okay.
So the, yeah, that's the, that's the life safety purpose of it, yes.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions? No? Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilkinson. You did a great job on that. All right. So item six are agenda topics for future finance committee meetings. Does anyone wish to enter an agenda topic? No? Excellent. Very well. All right. Well, with all of that done, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Anyone else?
Second.
So, so it's Mr. Allman and, Ms. Allman, Ms. Allman and Ms., who was second there? Was that Dan or?
I think it was Kate.
Kate. It was Kate? Okay.
I had to hit the button.
All right. Excellent. In that case, I, the finance committee meeting is adjourned at 7:15 PM. Thank you very much, everyone.